I'm very suspicious.
It was funny.
No, you know, I don't feel that on my conscience. I can barely watch it, so I definitely don't. How that happened. I think it works out. I agree. For sure.
That's a good one.
My ringer hasn't been on like twenty minutes. I will be answering. Or definitely. Maybe that's a good thing. I'll be kidding. I'll give it to you.
It is six o'clock. Going to call a business meeting the city of Smith Center order. Welcome everyone. I didn't know we had such an interest in what was going on around here. Welcome. We have the minutes in front of us of the November tenth business meeting. Has everybody had a chance to review those minutes? Are there any additions or corrections to those?
Not for me.
Let's do a motion to approve the November tenth meeting's minutes. Move and seconded, all those favors say aye.
Aye.
This month's vouchers and receipts. Any additions or corrections to those?
Not on mine.
Need a motion to approve.
Seconded.
Move and seconded, all those favors say aye. Under guests this evening, we have bright beginnings. Dana, you may have the floor.
I'm here to follow up on our discussion a couple of weeks ago. I have presented the financial reports as requested. In front of you is the January to date financial reports. And then the October report. As we're going to try to help us find some ways to cut some costs. We have done some discussion as a board as well about some ways to cut costs. The city's economic development department has voted to essentially pause our payments on that loan for a year, and I think that will be in the economic development report tonight. And then we have had some discussions with some private individuals about being able to cover kind of the funding gaps as well. So those are essentially the updates. We did reach out to the in-home providers and were not able to get letters of support.
Has it not available or have they not supported?
They most generally, they don't support the taxpayer dollars going to the center. Several of them are here tonight, so they may be willing to speak to that as individuals.
Yeah, well, that was a concern of ours, I'm sure. I thought about this over the weekend quite a bit. And one thing stuck with me, as you mentioned, is a lot of the neighboring counties are suffering the same level regarding shortcomings of income. And just from the outside looking in, what's to say that you just forget 501(c)(3) and get out from underneath the blanket of the state and set your own fees for childcare into respectable, profitable for your business? Because that's right under the thumb of the state in reverse to what you can charge, correct?
So, no. Market forces are what we try to consider when we set our tuition rates. The state doesn't set those for us. We do get increased tuition from DCF, is that right?
Yes, the state does set the DCF allowance for childcare subsidy. And there is a cap on that per hour per child for families who do qualify. And so we could charge over that. The families would then be responsible for any of that difference to be paid out privately.
Does that ever reconsider? Or would that put you?
Raising our rates?
Right.
It is being considered, yes. But to raise, I mean, you have to balance it so it's not too high and nobody comes brings their children to the center. So we have to have to consider market forces as well.
I just don't see an end game solution here. You know, where does the solution lie? If the bailout money from the city or the county or whoever may be and private individuals isn't there, that's not always going to be there. I just don't see a win-win long-term anywhere here.
I hear you.
How does the center's rates compare to an in-home provider? It's been a while since I took it.
I don't know what the in-home providers charge.
Are we allowed to talk?
Yes, you may.
The center is the highest in town.
I didn't know, okay. I mean, thank you.
You're welcome.
And generally, I think Haze, their center operates at what it takes to break even for their center, and they're a good $25 a week more than we are for their center to cover those costs.
Well, your business is no different anybody else. Labor's always the killer or lion's share of it in every business. It doesn't matter where you're at, Chris, or whoever. I mean, that's just a fact. But I don't know how many people are employed there full-time.
Currently have.
Or part-time?
Twelve, right? Twelve full-time employees.
And how many does that per child? Like, do you have five kids per person?
The ratio of child to adult depends on the age of the children. Obviously with the younger children requiring a less ratio, four to one.
Yeah.
And the older children are twelve to one, is that right?
Nine to one.
Nine to one. Any other questions on the financials or ideas?
The only other question I had was like on your food. That's also obviously high. Does the state or anybody help with that?
We are trying to get into the state food program and have been trying for a couple of years. The problem has been our financial statements, and I think we've remedied that. And so we should be able to get into that program in the next, I don't know how long it takes.
Once they process the application, there's forty-five to sixty days before they come for an onsite inspection. And then a determination between thirty and forty-five days after that.
So you've probably got to get to a
Several months, yes.
net income or a loss to qualify, I'm guessing.
And you must prove sustainability.
Council, you want to reconsider, reconsider what their request were?
Can I speak? If you have a place for a change? So when this originally started, I know the board has changed and everything. But I don't know how many, I think Jody and I, were you even at that meeting at the courthouse? I think we're the only two that were found at that meeting. They asked providers in the town at that time what our thoughts were about it. And I said, if you don't go in debt-free, it's not going to be sustainable. You're not going to find anybody that's going to work for that amount of money to run a business like that. Like, all of us, the first few years you're in, you're making nothing. Your director position, how much do you pay your director?
I think the current rate is forty thousand.
There's no way we put forty thousand for how many years? I've been in twenty-five years. And so it's a big difference. And when we first went into this, I said, you're looking at ten to one ratio at an in-home daycare. And they're saying there's such a great demand for this. But nine to one, four to one, you have more employees. If you're not backed by a big corporation, it's going to fail. And personally, I, it's not affected my business at all. I'm supportive of it. It's nice that it's there. But the fact now that they're asking for taxpayer dollars to support them because their business is not sufficiently running, it's frustrating as a taxpayer. I didn't come to you and ask for money when I started my business. And yeah, it's supposed to be nonprofit. They're saying they reached out to us. They have not. I have not received a single letter, email, message, nothing. I've been in daycare for over twenty-five years. I was originally asked to join the first meeting. And when I told them it wasn't a good idea that they would put over half of us out of business, they argued with us and then uninvited us to every meeting after that. So that's why you don't have support now, is because you have those people that burned those bridges from day one. They asked for our opinion, and I said, we need an after-school program. That's where the need is. It's not. Like, these people that, they did a survey or whatever, and people are saying, yeah, we need daycare, we need daycare. Well, those are people that want to drop in daycare one, two days a week. You can't run a business on drop-in care. It's just not possible. But like now, what we're running into is the state is trying to force us to up our rates to get closer to them so they can get more money. I'm not doing that to my parents. My rates are high enough the way it is. And you get multiple kids in there. And then the other complaint I've heard from people that have called asking for childcare is I go to the center and they tell me I have to fill out DCF paperwork to even get enrolled. And so you're forcing them into yet another government-funded program that taxpayer dollars are paying for that daycare. That should be a stepping stone to get you by when you need help. It shouldn't be something that you're forced to go into on a regular basis. But those are complaints I've heard. I don't understand a lot of this because I'm on the other end where I get the calls from the parents. And I had one gentleman call me. He had three kids. He had a physician with the daycare center, was supposed to start on Monday. He called me on Friday and he goes, I just received a phone call that they no longer have those physicians available for me. And that's crushing as a provider because we're in this position because we want to help. But yet you guys are turning away a family of three. And he was in a custody battle, so he was also in the process of losing his kids. But yet, what is the center there for if you're turning away business, even when we send business to you? Like, that's the part I don't understand. So. Yeah, and now we have daycares that have openings. We were talking about it. And like I said, when we were in that initial meeting, I told him, I said, what you're talking about, you're going to close over half of us down. And I said, then we're going to be in the issue when the center fails that we don't have those people. Was there six that closed? We had like eleven, and I took us down to five. And so we, that's why you don't need the support. It's because they came in gung-ho, this is what we need. And it wasn't what we needed. And we tried telling them that, and then you closed half of us down. And now we're in the same situation as we were before, is you guys are going under and you've got a few trick ones back in. And they're not full. So I don't have sympathy because the fact that, I mean, it's just like any business owner, and I appreciated Chris standing up at the last meeting and saying that, you know, I'm a business owner too, like, you're taking money from the taxpayers. I get there's childcare need, but that's not fair to the rest of us that have struggled through those times. Through COVID, through all of that, and our businesses, we found a way. We cut, we cut other places. The other comment that was made is you were saying that it was that we could run grants through your business. You can't run grants through one name and have multiple grants for the same type of grant under one business. We have the ability to get grants through our business too. So you were saying that that benefits us, but it doesn't benefit us.
There was a check written to one of the in-home providers this year to help us start up.
But you're saying you're contacting us about this. I've been in this business twenty-five years.
I was the only one daycare that was contacted out of all of us.
I talked to Kelsey and I talked to Jody.
Today.
Today.
Today, yes.
Today.
That was the last meeting you wrapped up.
The last meeting, you said you talked to everybody, and you never did.
We watched it.
We watched it. That's why we're here. We're just trying to stand up for other businesses in town. We're all struggling. Everybody's struggling. We don't want to see the center go, but we can't afford to keep giving money over for a dying business, and it's sad to watch because we really do need childcare. We really do. And there, we've gotten two girls that I've got started up. We helped them. We started them up as private people. And they're not full. They need kids. So there's places for kids to go. And we don't have waiting lists. And they're not full.
Thank you for your input. Counsel? With the bright beginnings on the table for the request that we have, they have provided, does anyone want to go any further with that action? Yes or no?
No. No.
Dana, was there any more follow-up with the county, on the county level, or is that?
Yes. I have not followed up with them yet.
Okay.
Chris? It is consented to counsel not to pursue bright beginnings request. The other two guests will be moved to the back of the agenda just due to the time constraints of how long it's going to take, and we've got a lot of stuff to go over. And John, your stuff will come up later on the previous and ongoing business. We have healthcare insurance premiums. If everybody had a chance to go over these premiums, there's probably not a whole lot we can do about, about eleven point oh-two percent increase from last year. Did we have on here the dividend that we received?
What reimbursement was from last year?
Yeah.
It was just a little over twenty thousand.
If you compare that bottom left side to the renewal under UHC, you'll see the difference. I believe it was three hundred and thirty-five thousand from here. Brought down to three hundred and fifteen-ish, is that right?
Yes, three fourteen, yeah.
That to do with that refund that was received from United Healthcare.
Would you want to repeat to approve?
This one here, we're going to go with the current plan renewal. This one, these ones have really high deductibles or high co-insurance pays.
Silver rule. Renew the United Healthcare?
Yep.
No changes in the premiums or?
It will raise for an employee spouse, it's going to raise it twenty-four fourteen. That's in the bottom right-hand corner. It'll show what the cost raise is per employee.
In our twenty-six budget, how much did we put in for percentage of increase?
We, yeah, we did twelve.
Twelve? Any questions on the United Healthcare premium for total three thirty-five, five forty? Three hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and forty million. Collins, counsel?
Almost like they knew what we budgeted.
I think they must have read it before we did.
We got us bugged.
If there's no further questions on our need to motion to approve the United Healthcare renewal.
Send move.
Sir? Been moved seconded to renew the United Healthcare. All those favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion, Carrie. So under new business, we have cereal, malt, beverage for General.
I didn't put anything in the packet for both of those. We just received two. It's about to be the end of the year, and they need to redo their annual license. All of their documents are already in order. We've already gotten the documentation back from KBI saying that it's good to go, so just.
On both of them?
Yes.
Motion for both?
Yep. Moved seconded to approve the cereal, malt, beverage for Dollar General and all those, all those favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion, Carrie. You got the documents for me to sign and deliver.
Yes.
Under departmental reports, we have economic development.
No one was able to come for economic development, so they said they will be here at our next meeting.
Is there any action items?
They wanted to add me to their Heritage Townhomes bank account. I think that was the.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
We need a motion to approve renting niles for the Heritage Townhome bank account with which bank, both banks?
That I'm not positive of. It's just two of the guaranteed daycare.
You just threw one.
The guarantee.
The guarantee.
Do we need to appoint her officially first?
She has not been added yet.
To be on the signature card, we just need to have my name removed and hers put in place. And that could be in the officer, in the office, so I believe you're okay to go forward at this point instead of waiting.
All right, I make that motion.
Seconded. Move and seconded to add Brittany to the Gulfport. Rick, do you have a sprayer bin?
I've got one in this packet.
That was brought to me, actually. Everett gave that to me. He got that from the Gulfport. And so there's two quotes here, two bids. There's one for thirty-five thousand, that is the used sprayer. He provided us with one to show the cost of a new sprayer, which is a little under sixty-two. They have raised the majority of the sums for this. They're about five thousand dollars short. And I believe that that is what they are asking for, is the remainder of five thousand to purchase the sprayer. They mentioned that there were some mowers that they were going to sell to potentially come up with the other five thousand, so.
I spoke to Everett, he mentioned there was some equipment that we spoke about earlier. Mowers.
There's the tree spade, which I'm looking into that right now. I have to get approval from whoever granted it to us to see if they have a preference on how we would utilize the funds once we sold it. So I'm just waiting to hear that from the community, I'll be sure.
Rick, what are we using now?
We have a big pole sprayer pulled down, pole sprayer. My question is, they were talking about using, keeping that, and I don't know why they'd need two sprayers. I have no idea. Can't store the chemical in them anyway. Got to be washed out and you know what I mean? I think the other sprayer ought to be put on auction with the rest of the stuff.
What will this do that we can't do today?
Got me. What type of sprayer is this?
It's a simple Gulf Toro, I believe. I mean, that's a commercial golf course. From what I understand.
Will it do greens?
I think the old one's a three-point.
Yeah, it's only just a three-point with PTO and.
This is a much better deal, but they only need five grand.
I don't know, Bryce. That's the first I've seen of it, dude.
Their minutes say that they raised thirty thousand from the Schrader Foundation and Community Foundation to purchase it.
What we're selling or what they want to sell, I think.
So they only need five thousand for the new one or the used one?
The used one.
Little difference.
And then they'll reimburse us with the proceeds from what they sell?
I think that's what he, that's what he's made it sound like.
Yeah.
If you manage your equipment reserve, you can make that expenditure and then deposit any of the sale funds back into that fund to show reimbursement straight across.
Need a motion for the five thousand. I need a second for that.
With the Gulfboard, I would. I mean, that's why we have them, and they raised the fund by ninety-five percent of it. It's a lot of money, but I wish we had someone here to represent the need for it. But evidently the board has motive and they're in there here, so I'll make that second.
Been moved seconded, all those favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion, Carrie. We have Smith Center Planning Commission. They have someone here to represent them?
No, they're they provided the minutes to me, and they are recommending to add Addie Thayer to the board. They were a member short. So that does need your approval to add her if you're willing.
Comments about Addie Thayer on the board, counsel?
Everybody, I'll make that motion added to the board.
Need a second.
Second.
Been moved seconded, all those favors say aye.
Aye.
Addie Thayer's added to the board.
Do you want to talk about the rest of their business awards?
Yeah.
Wait, because this will be a guest.
What's that?
This will be John.
Yeah, this will be John. John, the you'll read what they've done or recommended?
They have recommended to go ahead and approve the zoning change for the apartments. There are just some concerns, otherwise not regarding necessarily the zoning change. Which John has.
John, you may have the floor.
I attended that meeting last week. And there were some concerns picked by both of the members of the commission and others at the meeting. It was focused primarily on parking. And I understand there were certain things that have to be met in It was focused primarily on parking, and I understand there were certain things that have to be met in determining whether you as body should approve this change or not. But there was some confusion about that. We didn't seem to have that information available. There was no, nobody was there to represent the company that's supposed to be doing this. We could not ask them questions. So it, it was, my opinion at least, that the, that the commission was gonna table it until they could get further information and then have a meeting. And so those of us that were there as, as general citizens left the meeting, I think, with the assumption that they were gonna table that. At least if you agree with that.
Thought that, yes.
And so then the next day, I, I called Terry just to see what they discussed further, and she said that they had called the representative, and he had assured them that the parking issue wasn't gonna be a problem. And then, Melissa, if you have an email from the company the following day, would you mind reading that?
Thank you.
Also, John, nothing was in writing.
His response regarding the parking. We asked him for an actual layout of plans initially, and he said, no, they don't have a layout of plans. They can do an aerial view of the parking spots, and he says, according to the aerial view, there's a hundred spaces, not including the ones for the childcare center. Most cities have a requirement of two spaces per unit. If Smith Center has the same requirements, the existing parking spaces should be covered without modifications. If we need to modify, that is typically during the construction process that the city would require that to be done prior to gaining occupancy.
So that seemed to be a complete reversal of what they told them the night before on the phone. No problem. They, they can't say that there's no problem without documenting that, in my opinion. I would like to see that. But even more important than that, I think, is a consideration, and I don't believe it is, is the safety of our citizens, the residents of this community. We all know where this is located. It's located at the junction of two eighty-one Highway and South City Linda Street. Where are the kids gonna play? According to their projections, there's gonna be twenty-two units in there that will be available for children. Where are they gonna play?
Probably next door to the.
Yeah. Probably across street.
Across street to the east.
That's not what I'm getting at, Bryce, at all. What I'm saying is, is that, and we all know this, I think, when we all agree, people coming into town from the south are hardly going thirty-five miles an hour when they get to the city limits. People going north out of town are hardly going thirty-five miles an hour by the time they get to the city limits. So that traffic is moving very quickly. The South City Linda's traffic now is seeing significant heavy equipment traffic up and down that street, and if any of you have been down there, looks to me like we're gonna have to replace that whole damn street from Main Street Clear to the Rock Road. And so there's more equipment going back and forth and back and forth. I'm concerned about the welfare of the kids. Across the street south, Prairieland has established a facility there, and they have put together what I believe is training facility for their, for their people. Great idea. That brought a transformer back down to the ground where I could walk up and do whatever I want to with it. Now, it's not hot, I think, uh, but, oh, I'm a kid, that's a great thing to go climb on and see what this does, and what if I could get to the one that's up there, you know, on that pole? So anyway, back to again, my, my biggest concern here, along with the parking issue, I, I can't find a hundred. But anyway, I, I think they need to provide us a document that shows us where those are. How many are gonna be committed for the wellness center? I don't know what the requirements are for handicap parking. I assume there are some, how many are for those? The laundries that are available in this facility, you have to come in from the outside, and that's no big deal, except you're gonna have to provide parking there that isn't, because as I understand it, they designate parking spots to their tenants.
And the way I understand it, this program is built in three separate phases, and parking and all of that stuff will be attached to each phase, that's it.
And, and I suppose that's right, but we gotta look at the whole, big picture, Bryce.
I, I, we are, and I'm on the board that.
Yes, I know, I told you. And, and your vision was different from what I heard from Gwyneth. You told me that your idea was to make all the front of a hospital city offices, and I told.
But it's coming up.
So I said, that sounds like none of that, none of that idea, but that isn't the way it turned out.
I know, apparently. But they're building it in three phases, and they probably be two to three years out on the third phase.
Well, okay, there again, none of this information's been put out to the public. This, that's the first I've heard of this.
Well, it's all, it's all it, together, it's all in the minutes of those meetings.
Of those meetings?
Yeah, it's a county, it's a counties.
Yeah, I'm, I'm aware, I'm well aware of that. It was a county issue, now it's in your lap. But it was.
Just for the zoning.
But what I'm saying there, that I was disappointed with, is that they didn't disseminate that to the general public. The first I know about that was when I signed one of the.
Concerned, but I'm sure that we've read, I'm sure they met all the obligations, because I was in two or three public meetings in here.
Well, all I'm saying was, I didn't see it in the paper anymore. And so, and I, and I talked to several people. I even came down after I talked to you and to Gwyneth, the city offices and Aston Girls in there, they didn't know anything about it either. So I didn't believe in what you were saying. I believe what you're saying, you have meetings. I just don't believe that information was put out to the people that we know.
That would be a concern you take up for Thashley and Jim.
I get it, I, I, that's water under the bridge. But I'm, my concern is the safety of the kids. And I still think there's gonna be a parking issue. And so that's what I think that you folks on this body need to consider, is the safety of the residents of our community, notwithstanding this being very simple, this page fits and this and this and this. I know this isn't something that is generally looked at, but I think in this case it is important that it is. So I'd appreciate it if you would consider that.
Thank you, John. Counsel?
Well, it sounds as if we need to do our due diligence to make sure that this is gonna have sufficient parking from the facility. I mean, that's, plus the children situation as well, but, uh, this is kind of rigged to us, because we haven't been involved, it's been a county, county project, but.
You'd think they have an engineered draw.
Can I not provide that?
Of the project they're doing.
There is on the website.
Uh, well, if I may.
Yeah.
One question that, that we did not get asked, because we didn't ask it, didn't get asked it, is you told me this was not a low-income project, is that correct?
That is correct.
Do you know, do you know what the rates are for the one, two, and three that are used?
I can't remember them, they were in that six to eight hundred dollar range.
Six to eight?
Yeah.
And what, what, again, I don't know, what is the general rent around here?
It's in that neighborhood, about that.
Okay, so that, so that's in the ballpark, it's not, it's gonna be considered.
It's not income-based, you don't have to be income-based like.
Well, that's what you'll be concerned about, the residents around there, as far as that was.
Is that gonna take away from community people that have rental sales, that are gonna be leaving them, maybe somebody from Dustin's, Regina Hall's, announced a rental?
Well, this would be, this would be a private, this is a private organization, it's.
That was, that was the only question I had about that, that's for people apart, my vote was again, is on the children. The request was to rezone that from L one to L two, or two to three, or whatever it was. Change the timing.
From R two to R three.
R two to R three.
And the planning commission approved it, right?
Yes.
Collins, counsel?
John, did you voice these concerns of that planning commission meeting?
Uh, no, we got tangled with the, with the parking issue, and then while I thought they had tabled it and we're gonna have another meeting, I thought we had an opportunity to bring that up at that time. So, no, I did not.
Has the county posted that in the planning year or anything like that, so the public?
Come on over to here.
Oh, no, I don't know. I know less about it than.
Uh, the planning commission approved this, do you guys wanna approve it or not?
I'd like to see more of it. Well, I went and looked at it, I, I found parking for between fifty and sixty vehicles. That's doing some work to get to that, and not taking any parking away from the daycare, not taking any parking away from the wellness center.
How many, Rick?
Fifty to sixty.
And then eight sixty-six.
Well, there's, there's twenty-eight on the east side.
Yeah, or twenty-seven on the east side.
So, if you make a driveway to go into that area between the daycare and the, and the apartments, and you tear out some of the grass and add thirty or forty foot of concrete, square that up, talking about another ten or fifteen vehicles.
They have the space to do it.
Fifty or sixty, I don't know whether they're gonna put a hundred.
And how many have they designated for the wellness center?
They don't, they don't, I don't know. I'm just telling you what I went and I counted.
So, I mean, that's all I'm saying, is they have not, all of them provided us with a verbal answer and an email saying they haven't done anything yet, as far as the parking. And again, to me, that's the secondary issue. And I know the other one that I brought up is not something that's in that required purview of the planning commission. I think it ought to be.
I think that's a question you need to approach the county commissioners with on their.
I can't, you look like you, you've got control of the property, the commissioners don't have control of the property anymore, Bryce.
They sold it.
They can't do anything for you.
They sold it.
I know that, no, I'm saying.
The only control we have is to say whether we go to R three.
That, I agree with.
That's the only control we have.
I, I agree with you, hundred percent. But I think you should have all the information that you need to make that decision. And I don't think the other issue that I brought up has ever been considered.
Yeah, that may be, that may be, but we're not the body that considers that.
You're the body that approves it.
To go from R one to R three.
The body that considers it, the body that considers it.
We have a recommendation here, we have a recommendation here to go to R three from our board.
R, R two to R three, right?
R two to R three.
Okay. I get it, I get that. What I'm saying is, is I think this should be a consideration for the safety and safety of our community.
It's a council's decision what they wanna do.
I agree.
There you go. Counsel, what do you wanna do?
We need to see a set of plans from the people who are building, see what, see what they're gonna do.
That's what I would like, Bryce, is the engineered plan.
Good.
I agree with John, we may see plans till the, till the kids come home, but childcare, child, children issue is not gonna be, they're not gonna talk about it. There's gonna be nothing in there about where kids are gonna play, or how safe they're gonna be, the, is there a play area that's gonna be fenced? Is there, or the kids are gonna, I don't know, I, uh, when you buy a house anywhere in town, is there a consideration to where your kids are gonna play? Would that be a consideration whether or not you buy a property?
It could very well be, if I didn't have a yard at all.
Well, or you, or, yeah, I, I understand, there's, yeah, I understand.
I mean, and, and, and depending on where you're at, whether you, the box line number or not, I think where this is located is a more dangerous place than the average place.
Yeah, it would, it, it, to me, it doesn't, I, I never thought about that in this way, but it sure wouldn't be a place that you would seem like you would wanna raise kids.
Well, that's, yeah.
But I don't know, I don't know if adding a play area, and you're right about the streets, you're right about the traffic. Uh, it, I thought this from the beginning, I think this doesn't seem to be a real child favorable project. And maybe it was never thought of that way.
And maybe not, but, but, and I agree, we need housing, but if, if you're gonna offer housing that's not gonna be perceived as safe for my kid, I'm not gonna go there probably anywhere. But I think, I think we have a responsibility.
Yeah, exactly.
As a city, let's put something in place to address these situations that will probably never come up again.
Yeah, that's right.
Because normally, the house being built or it is one location, one family, one thing. This is not that. This is driven by.
This driven by repurposing an old building.
It's absolutely, that absolutely, in my opinion, should be destroyed. And then maybe consider putting up some of the housing like is up on Roger Bar Way, so that each unit would have their own driveway, their own garage, their own sun and backyard. And that would solve some problems, and they would be attractive, and I believe more attractive to somebody who wants to live there.
Can I just, can I just say something? Because I grew up in Dallas, Texas, and even in the downtown Dallas area, they have tons of condos and high-rises now. There are a lot of families that live there, because their, their parents work there. They don't have yards, they have dogs, they have animals. They go, they consider that when they make those decisions. So the architects of the buildings and the owners, the people who own them, they build them, and then the people who buy them will live there and make that choice.
That's right. Well, I just had a mother buy a house in Smith Center, a nice little house, she was lucky to find it, but she would've moved right in there in a heartbeat, single. And my father-in-law just moved here from Carney less than a month ago. He bought the garage slash barn dominium right across from me.
That's what's going, that's what's going on.
That, uh, he would've been right in there. So, I mean, there's, there's other opportunities. I agree with you, John, if there's kids moving in, they need to be safe, but I think we won't have as much trouble filling it up with maybe elderly, not elderly, but.
Well, again, that's, that's another one of my concerns. If this doesn't fly, which I don't think it's gonna, then you got to, you're right back where you started. But again, my main concern is that these kind of things don't come up in the small towns very often, and the location of this, and the potential for issues with the kids, not just the kids, their pets, yeah, they're gonna wanna take the pets out somewhere, what are they gonna take them?
That's their choice.
Same issue, Bryce.
That's their choice.
That's their choice, but.
It's their choice to down just to it or not.
I think we have a responsibility to make decisions that can avoid, but it has to be done.
I agree with Tracy, we can, we need to see, I think, black and white, the plans or something. So we gotta know, I don't know what's going on down there, and I'm the council, and I don't know, but I'm not on the board either. Let's see if we can find some of that stuff.
Decision of the council to table this, two weeks, next meeting?
Yes.
We need to get some plans. We need to get some plans.
So, will there be another meeting of the, of the commission and vice or not?
What's that?
Will, will, will there be another meeting of the, the commission that made this recommendation to the council?
Probably not.
Probably not. We're tabling their decision. So, there will be another meeting from them.
Okay.
Well, we will get our estimates together between now and two weeks and we'll put it, it's only at the end of the now for two weeks, whatever our next meeting is.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Rick, you have anything ready for the council?
Nope.
Anybody have anything for Rick? Tracy, Dawn?
No.
Thanks, Rick. Jamie, do you have anything, anything ready for the council?
Uh, yeah. The, uh, we're going down to Junction City. She's prepared for work first next week.
Do you guys have your light phasers? Metal detectors?
Yeah, they got those.
Okay. Anything for Jamie, Dawn?
No.
Chris? Tracy?
No.
No.
Thanks, Jamie. Jill, Brittany?
I just have two things really. The first one is I just wanted you guys to know that I did get complete funding for the Christmas lights for next year. We got a grant and then we got a very generous donation for the remainder. And then we also got another grant from Prairie Line Electrics and we'll be switching to LED lights. So, those are ordered and they will be ready for next year.
Are we, are we staying with the same white style?
No, they are snowflakes instead of wreaths.
Red, green, blue, warm snowflakes?
They are no color, just LED.
Tradition. Tradition.
And then.
Snowflake gray.
That doesn't include the garland that goes around the bottom. I don't know if we're going to look into some other options to not have the green garland on the bottom.
You going to replace Santa Claus too?
Well, I was thinking of adding some colored coriander tie. I was going to red and green.
It is my birthday.
I know, I know.
Do we have any plans from the old bikes?
No.
The bike that were in contact?
Yeah.
Some Decado?
Sure.
Eleven?
Absolutely.
Make yourself a.
Two Nash.
Honestly, that's not an idea. The whole miles to your house.
Going to do the whole bags.
Now, Jill, do you have anything ready for the council?
I've got my letter distributed there of my final exit out of the city. You know, I just wanted to let you know. And let me check.
Good night.
That is something I wanted to talk about as well. I think she is planning on being done here fairly sooner than later. And with that, there's a lot of stuff that I will still need help with, you know, with budget, insurance next year. If you guys would be willing to allow me to call her and, you know, still pay her hourly if she comes in to help out, get through some of the weeds of things.
Sure.
I think that would be very helpful.
Anybody have anything for Jill or?
Regretfully, I wish you the best.
Thank you very much.
Welcome on board.
You're doing great. Thank you, thank you.
Melissa, do you have anything ready for the council?
Uh, no.
Anybody have anything for Melissa?
No.
Chris? Tabitha, do you have anything ready for the council?
Nope, not tonight.
Uh, governing body reports. Chris, you got anything? I have nothing to report. Tracy?
No, no.
Dawn?
Fence people were here today working on the new fence.
Good, good, good. Ty, do you have anything?
No, not tonight.
Julie, you are next on the agenda.
Of all the things I ever thought I'd be standing here talking to the city council about cats and owner responsibility was not on the list. Yet, here we are after months of dealing with this firsthand and a full week of non-stop social media debates, it's clear the issue needs to be addressed formally. This is no longer just my problem. Many residents and business owners are spending their time cleaning up after animals that aren't theirs. Besides the constant smell, Smith Center is dealing with an overpopulation of cats that's affecting daily life for lots of people. People laugh about this online, but stepping in cat waste behind your business or home every single day isn't funny when you're living, when you're the one living it with it. I've tried to approach this with humor, but the truth is, this is not humorous for people who are directly impacted. I'm asking you, as elected officials, to create a real plan because having no plan or having one that isn't enforced simply isn't working. I've provided letters from the health department outlining cleanliness and health concerns as well as comments from residents dealing with everything from potential lawsuits to homeowners with litters being born in their garages, sheds, and under their porches. These situations aren't isolated. They're happening across town and people are tired of being responsible for animals that they don't own. I've also included some sample codes from other, from another town, not because I think they should be copied exactly, but because they show what other communities address, excuse me, because they show that other communities address these issues successfully and responsibly. I also believe the city should consider requiring a pet registration, not as a fee, but simply as a basic level of accountability. It doesn't have to cost anything, but it would give owners peace of mind if they're worried about someone trapping their cats because a registered identifiable pet is much easier to return and protect. Registration also helps community, helps the community understand what animals belong to whom and whom is responsible for what. A straightforward, practical plan to reduce cat numbers, limit messes, and increase responsibility could be as easy as setting a limit on the number of cats per household or property, require simple no-fee pet registration, require collars or tags for outdoor cats, enforce sanitation complaints. If your animals create a mess, mess elsewhere, you clean it up or face a fine. Designate one feeding area per caregiver and only on their own property. Stop feeding colonies on business or public property. If practicing TNVR, trap, neuter, vaccinate, release, return the cats to your own property, not on someone else's. Provide relocation options, farms, rural, rural homes, adopters for unowned or excess cats. These are fair, common sense expectations focused on responsible ownership and community health. And if a pet code already exists, then I'm simply asking, what is it? Does it apply here? And does it need updated or enforced? I'm here because this affects local businesses, neighborhoods, and the overall well-being of our town. The amount of public discussion alone shows that people clearly sees, see this as a real issue. I'm also wanting to address the concern that keeps being brought up. I keep hearing dramatic warnings about people murdering cats, yet I haven't heard a single statement of accountability from the people feeding them, not one that says, I'm sorry my actions are creating a mess for my neighbor, my neighbors. I'm sorry your business smells like a litter box because of where I feed them. Let me help clean up the problem I contributed to. Instead, every solution requires everyone else to adjust their properties, their lives, their businesses, and their patients. So, as, so a few individuals can continue feeding cats in ways that created this problem. It also, it's, it's always, my neighbors, the, and business owners should clean it up. Businesses should buy more deterrence. This, the city should create a whole new program or start a shelter. Everyone else should calm down, but never, never is it, maybe we should stop feeding cats on someone else's property. Maybe we should stop relocating, relocating them to, or, excuse me, maybe we should relocate them to my own property. Maybe we should help clean up our cats' messes. Maybe we contribute, maybe we contributed to this problem and it's our job to help fix it. The part, that part is noticeably missing. And let's be honest, if they're mongering about cat murder distracts from the real issue, the burden placed on residents and business owners who didn't create this problem but are the ones stuck dealing with the smell, the waste, the damage, and the cleanup every single day. If you want real solutions, you might have, you, they might have to involve you changing your behaviors that caused the problem, not telling everybody else how they should adjust so that you can keep doing what you're doing. And until I even hear one sentence, it sounds like my actions are affecting others and I want to help fix this, it's hard to take any proposed solutions seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Can I respond?
You may.
Okay. I'm the, according to her post, the crazy cat lady, the wannabe Pied Piper that I've done all this. Would you please ask her how many times I went to her property with a baggie and a scoop looking for all this cat litter that she indicated was all over her property? None. I found one dog poop bush one time from a medium sized dog, all right? If you set traps out, that is against the law in Kansas. You cannot, what they call relocate, which I heard that they wanted to do, relocate an animal without permission, whatever, because that is abandonment. And that is the attorney general office that handles that. So, and then also her indicating that, that, and looking straight at me, that's the only reason I'm saying that, is about five, four or five years ago when Kevin closed his pharmacy. And he fed kitties outside because in his back driveway, it was a circular drive and people could drive around there and go into the pharmacy or come back up. And the, I think the county health department had a ball out there, the lady that had the shoe store did. Kevin was concerned and I said, don't worry, I'll go and I'll keep feeding the cats. I have spayed, neutered, and all their shots, forty-nine cats, times that times the dollar amount. I have done my job to try to help. She indicates these are my cats that I, you should see the nasty texts I get, you know, if you like the cat that much, take them all to your house and they can poop in your yard and. I can't help it if somebody in the neighborhood has a stray kitty, then get it fixed. That's what, that's what takes care of this issue. And she thinks it's funny because ask her how many times? One time she called me and said, the contractors are here trying to build something in fact and there's cat poop all over the place. Immediately, I went over, baggy scoop, looked all around the place. She came out of her shop and I said, where is it? I don't see it. Well, it must have got cleaned up. I mean, this is, this is ridiculous. So, I have spayed, neutered forty-nine cats. She calls me the crazy cat lady, but I also read the Bible too. And if you look at Proverbs 12, verse 10, it says, those who are kind to our animals and our creatures are good, those that don't aren't. She wants them gone and wants them neutered. Who is going to take them? Do you want to take them and pay for this? Who is going to do this? Because she made some posts. And you know something else? It's against the law for a charity to disclose to someone else how much somebody donated to a charity and give them their name. Your charity can suffer consequences because of your saying, oh, guess what? Alicia came in and gave this much money.
We put it in a book, Alicia. We put it in a book.
Public information.
We put it in our annual statement.
Can we get back to a meeting, please?
Let's get back to it. Go back, right?
Anyway, back to the party issue. I donate a lot of time and effort to this. Trap and release program in Kansas, to the state of Kansas, use spayed, neutered, return to their colony. Against the Kansas law to relocate called abandonment, attorney general. Legal reprobations of donors protected on highest rank and Kansas, but the state attorney general office.
As explosive as this topic is, we need to just set up a commission on what we can do and cannot do.
I'm sorry, repeat.
As explosive as this topic is, we need to just set up a commission on what we can and cannot do. We're not here to turn this thing into a shit show. So, we're going to attack this problem responsibly.
Literally.
Can I respond?
Here's another one.
Yeah, let me know if you're.
I know, but I. We're going to keep the rhetoric toned down. Lady in the back.
Hi, guys. I have, I don't want to know is, you say you're going to trap them and rehome them. Where? To my house?
Whoa, whoa, whoa. We can't, we can't do that. We can't do that. The city cannot without being TDAHE.
Because I had a cat that was trapped and it was the first time he'd ever been out of his house. And I looked for him, I looked for him, and I found it somewhere in a live trap that they had baited and they covered so nobody could find the cat. And I had to search for him. Then I was told, I can do what I want, is what the person told me, okay? My cats, all my cats are spayed. If I have one that comes up that's, you know, not mine or whatever, that's just running around, I get that one spayed or neutered. All my cats have collars with my name, my address, and their name and my phone number. They can call me anytime if my cat's over there. I've gone to my neighbors and asked them, hey, is it, my cats getting new trash? No. But my dogs are, there's dogs running around. I've never had a cat get my trash. Dogs, yeah. So, and that deal with, oh, you want to worry about cats being murdered? Had one, got murdered.
Hey, look, I haven't killed any cats. I haven't condemned it. I haven't said to do it.
Time out, ladies.
Can I just say one thing about the fear mongering? The reason why there was fear mongering about that is because there were comments on the Facebook page by many people saying they were going to kill the cats. That, it's not that there wasn't a fear mongering by the other people. It was comments saying they were going to kill the cats. That's what caused.
Which could, which could, which could have been anyone.
And not all of us creepy.
It remains.
Was it Mr. Anonymous? Yes, lady.
In deference to the cat ladies and the cat lover, I want to speak to the city of Smith Center. Last winter, two newborn feral kittens were born on my front, on the chair on my front porch. I am speaking to bring attention to the sanitation, health, and property concerns caused by individuals feeding or sheltering animals that do not belong to them. The damage caused by the feral, feral cat population in Smith Center is totally unacceptable. I formally request the city's attention to this recurring issue. This ongoing practice has resulted in significant sanitation concerns, repeated property damage and disturbances. It has antagonized neighbors to the point of law enforcement getting involved and infringes upon the rights of peace-loving residents of Smith Center. Unmanaged outdoor cat colonies contribute to public health concerns, environmental impact, property damage, and potential liability issues. I respectfully request the city establish and enforce ordinances related to, one, feeding and maintaining animals which do not belong to the person maintaining them. That's plain and simple. If it's not your cat, you don't feed it. Responsibility and accountability for animals a person claims to care for or own. Talking about accountability. Talking about accountability. Three, measures addressing property damage, nuisance conditions, and public health concerns caused by unmanaged cats and cat colonies. This matter affects numerous citizens and requires clear municipal guidance, obviously. Specifically, I ask the council for two things. Authorization for Scott Peterson to relocate feral cats to his goat barn, which he has publicly offered to do. Scott's not here, but I wish he was. I didn't know how to get hold of him. And two, publish a notice and pioneer publicly discouraging the practice of feeding and maintaining animals which don't belong to you. Thank you.
Counsel, I think we need to...
I have something to say. I don't know how long this was going on before my husband brought up that post of, "Hey, we're looking for a solution because across the street, we have cats that's nobody lives there, but a lady maintains it, she feeds them, we have no problem with it." But as soon as the cats came over to our house and got in our garbage that had a lid on it, yeah, it's our fault if we leave a trash bag outside. That's on us. But again, the cats get into our property, it's a nuisance. Look up the definition of nuisance on Chat GPT, AI, nothing. The definition of a nuisance, that's what it is.
Especially when they crawl on your vehicle, scratch your windows, and everything.
Exactly. And I don't know how long this has been going on before we made the post for a solution. But again, people leave their windows down, it's cats getting it, pee, leave feces, everything. But again, it is a problem, but yes, there are cat lovers, dog lovers. Everybody loves them. It does depend. Everybody has an opinion, they're entitled to it. Whether or not you take it far, that's on you. But again, we just need to figure it out because I'm just tired and my husband is tired of picking up trash that we secure every night when we go to bed to make sure it doesn't get out. Yes, dogs from the city, cats from the city. It just depends on who takes care of it. That's it.
We realize that we do have a cat problem and food problem and possible problem and scum problem. They're all vermin and cats are...
Right, Margaret. So, real quick, there's something everybody can do right in this community right now to start with this, to help. Spay USA allows you to take fifteen cats and they cover the cost to get them spayed or neutered. All you have to do is find a farm or wherever to see who would be willing to take the cats. Start reducing it. Winter's coming, they're going to reduce themselves with the winter as well. Okay? Whether we like to hear that thought or not, they're going to start dying off with winter. If you start reducing the amount they're being fed, yes, they're also going to stop breeding and continuing on. But there are options that you can start utilizing right away that doesn't take a city ordinance. But anybody who is interested, collect your animal, collect up to fifteen. They will pay. You have to find the vet that's willing to do the T N R, but you can relocate them. Get a farm that will go ahead and take them out there as well. But you have to start doing something. I understand Julie's idea of collars, but again, I can grab cats, put miffy, biffy, and spiffy on there and give you a name and say that they're my cats. Once you start feeding a cat, you own the cat. Check up the laws. Once you start feeding them, they're your cats. So, you start running into all kinds of circles that you guys will never find an end to. But everybody has their own way that they can utilize something that says, "Hey, we got grant programs, you've got things that you can utilize to help reduce this." You guys also have to start looking at what a longer focus will be because you are going to keep running into this as the population grows. But at least as immediate need, people do have to start taking some responsibility, everybody. From the ones that feed it to the ones that don't. If you work collectively, you're going to get better handle of it. If you keep working against each other, you're just going to keep ending up here with more fire and flame. Can I say something? It's also the homeowner's responsibility to be responsible. Where I'm from in Texas, there are laws. You cannot put your trash out at night or you will be, if you get caught, you will be fined. There's ordinances that they have to, that they require. Because there's animals. I lived in a big town, but I lived on the outskirts, so there was a lot of wildlife. We never took our trash out at night. We took it out in the morning, we never had issues. We did not leave our garages open. We did not have cats in our area because there was so much wildlife that we killed them. But because of that, we had a huge mouse problem. So, we never left our garages open. If we did, and I would just open it, leave, come back, I had mice in my garage that I had to constantly kill and get rid of. So, there are things that you also can do as a homeowner to deter, deter, deter having rodents, cats, dogs, anything to out of your premises. There are things you can do. I'm not saying there are not other options, but there are things you can do, everyday thoughtful things, so you don't have cats in your garage, you don't have dogs, you don't have mice, you don't have... Those are things you can do. I mean, there's ordinances that the city can do to deter it.
Sunny? Go ahead.
You know, I've been here over fifteen years now. And I've never had any animals living in my house or anything like that. But when I moved here, I seen, I rescued a lot of cats, a lot of kitties and little baby kitties. And then you got to give them the medicine so they get better. I give them the medicine so they get better, then they couldn't have been gone, you know what I mean? I trained my cats. My cats have a cat door, they come in and out. We take them around the neighborhood, not the neighborhood, but just my little area right there where my house is. And they come in and out. They come home to eat, they come home to sleep every night. You know? And those are my babies, you know what I mean? And I'm willing to, if anybody wants to put down where they need to have some, I'll volunteer to go clean up somebody's area. Because I do love my babies. I love all animals, you know?
I get that there was no...
I know. But I just want to tell you guys that I will volunteer with anything for anyone to help do whatever. It's got to be after three o'clock, but...
I think it's a general consensus, we need to be looking at what are options.
But I've never heard a problem with any cats since I've lived here fifteen years. Never.
I don't think that's the issue. I think it's that people own thirty, forty cats. I have a neighbor that owns like thirty cats and I have a business. And that's what I'm saying is that's what needs to happen, is how many animals are you allowed to have? That's what it should come down to. You don't live on a farm, you live in a town. I have cats coming in putting their feces in my mulch and I have little kids playing out there. And I'm constantly hosing down my mulch, and it's rubber mulch. It's not sand, it's not a litter box, but that's how they use it. And so, there should be a limit. Is, I'm not against cats or anything, but like, our dog got out, we got fined. Like, there should be some kind of finer limits on how many cats you can have. You shouldn't be able to have thirty cats.
I know several people who've got way more than they can handle.
It just depends on the way, how many you have up there.
I'm just frustrated. I don't even live in y'all's city, I live in the county. I got the damn cat coming out and I got a vet bill for these stupid things because it killed my cat that was in my yard. And now I have a vet bill for a cat I didn't even have and I don't have anymore because it got killed by a feral cat. And I can't shoot the stupid thing if it attacks my cats. Like, that makes no sense. I'm not saying I want to hurt them and kill them, but like, I can't even trap the stupid thing to get rid of it. And now my kids play outside, they got to watch, you watch out for that big gray cat. Damn, they're going to go after him, but I'm not supposed to shoot the stupid thing.
Yeah, my cats know exactly how far my hose goes. And they'll be there. I've tried every spray. My porch smelled like a porta potty, but the cats would still come and sit on my chair on my porch.
It's notable that we have a cat problem. So, we're going to compile our options and we'll talk about our options in the next meeting.
I think you need to go to the state and look what the feral cat law says. They leave it up to each municipality to make up their own laws. And if you want somebody to come in and trap them, we have somebody that's licensed to do it. Somebody can find a place for them to go. You're running into an enforcement issue if you try to have a number that somebody can have or how many somebody can have, because when you got that many cats, you don't know what you got. Next thing you know, you got ten more that you don't know where they come from.
But Rick, how do you deal with that animals when you fix them out? So, you trap them...
Who cares if it's been fixed or not? If it's a feral cat, are you going over there and cuddling those cats and holding them every night? No, you're feeding them. They're feral cats. Nobody cares about them, but they're alive.
Let's tone it down then. I understand. We just got to keep this, our movement here is to go forward in finding out what our options are that we can do.
I did talk to a couple of cities that have similar issues that are of similar size. And I can email you just like what their responses were. And that will give you at least a place to start. But really, it is going to be up to you guys to do some research and decide on what kind of policy you want to do moving forward.
Well, let's start looking at this and put it on the agenda for the next meeting to move forward.
If you guys go home and look, the City of Inman, Kansas, ordinance 463. I looked for about three hours today. There's a lot of them in there that are pretty good. People feeding cats, how you deal with it if they're not your cats? How you handle situations where there's a bunch of cats? There's just a lot, there's good three pages in there, it's just good reading.
I did some research too. And I was surprised how many municipalities have a cat ordinance. And a lot of it is tied to the dog ordinance, but that's... If we had dogs doing what cats are doing, we would have had war in this town a long time. At least, I appreciate what you're doing for those cats. But they're still roaming. They're not reproducing, but they're still roaming.
Their pretty run just sounds the street for me are reproducing. They're reproducing.
Spay and neutering is not going to solve the issue. Not going to solve the problem.
So, for example, with the City of Inman, the ordinance, like, you guys can find a lot of cities have ordinances that doesn't mean that they're enforcing them. So, you really need to like, reach out to city council people or city clerks or law enforcement in those communities and ask, "I see you have this ordinance, how do you enforce it?" Like, that's what got me started is I have a colleague, a good friend, who's a city attorney in a similarly situated city who had sent an email on the list serve years ago, "Hey, we have a feral cat problem, what are you guys doing?" And I followed up with her and said, "What did you do? How did you solve it?" And she said, "Well, we passed an ordinance, but it's basically unenforceable because we don't have the money or the manpower to enforce it. And so, now we have an ordinance and we still have a million cats." So, that's what I'm saying is maybe Inman passed that ordinance and did nothing. Maybe they had a good solution, but obviously, just passing an ordinance won't do it. You got to figure out what, how you can, what is a plan that you can actually enforce that's actually something that will help.
If you read that one, you understand where I'm coming from. Because more of it lies on the people that want to take care of them.
Yep.
That want, have to register them if they get impounded, if they feed them.
We don't have a pound.
We're going to have a pound.
I might have misspoken. Relocate them. I'm not going to sit here and read this. You can go read it yourself, 463. And yes, you can relocate them, or there's about eight hundred cities doing it.
Scott Peterson went on what's happening with Smith Center Facebook page, volunteered, offered to relocate cats to his goat barn because he wants cats in his goat barn. And there's another barn on P Road out by Lebanon that's full of cats and full of mice, which seems to be a very humane situation. But if there's someone willing to do that, then why are we getting shot down by our neighbors for a solution that's just to protect our rights? You know, so we don't have any more property damage? Because it's not fair to feel helpless about this, to get... I mean, you can't put all of our property there, it's just not fair.
Ideas together.
Just real quick, so if you set an ordinance, it was you not, like, we set ordinance, but it's not enforced, what's going to say that what person is so fed up with this that they're going to take it in the matters of their own hand? So, we have to make sure if we do do an ordinance, it is enforced or one Joe Smith who just moved to Smith County who absolutely hates cats is going to go on a spree to get rid of them himself. That's the only thing with the ordinance.
He would be breaking the law.
Exactly. But it's one of those, if we don't want him to break the law because on his choice, we need to set that ordinance and enforce it as well.
I think you guys understand it. I agree with what Tabitha was saying. Making one and enforcing one are two completely different stories. Our law enforcement can spend twenty-four hours a day for three months trapping cats. It's a man, like, it's an enforcement issue. I think we need to relocate, people want them.
Are you saying that if someone takes the matter into their own hands, they find someone that'll manually catch the cats, relocate it to a nice place in the country, that we're going to get in trouble with the law?
No, 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 no. She was saying, she was saying killing it.
No, I'm talking, I'm asking the question, if we take matters into our own hands, we're sick of the cat eating, we're sick of this...
If it's someone's family pet.
No, I'm talking about feral cats. We know, I know, we know. There are...
We were going along pretty good there. Going in a real slow.
I'll go get started.
Timeout. We're going, we're going. We're going to do the research and figure out what is applicable to do.
I want to get in trouble with Jamie Marshall because I took matters into my own hands. I took a feral cat, had it caught, had it taken to the country. What is that, we have to go all the way to the country?
Done anyway.
In a barn where there are cats and a lot of mice.
I need a motion to adjourn. If voted seconded to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Take this outside. Everybody here.